It is 5:45 and I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Luciemar Unified School District Board of Education to Order for this Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023. Let the record reflect that all board members are present. I need a motion to adopt this evening's amended agenda with amended item number four.
I move we adopt the agenda for this evening, amended agenda for this evening.
Second.
Motion by Mayor, second by Santos. Roll call vote please.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Ms. Candell?
Yes.
Ms. Pham?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. We do have minutes to approve from the August 8th regular meeting. Would any trustee like to amend the minutes? Being known, I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes from August 8th, 2023.
I move to approve the minutes from August 8th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Candell. Roll call vote please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Candell?
Yes.
Ms. Pham?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Naomi Bernier? Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. Which brings us to closed session items. If any member of the public would like to comment on items that are on the closed session agenda, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no one in the boardroom, I'm going to close public comment and move to adjourn to closed session. Where we're going to discuss conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, conference with labor negotiators, public employee discipline dismissal, release and complaint. We are adjourned to closed session at 5:46 PM. We're going to reconvene the regular meeting of the Luciemar Unified School District Board of Educational Order for this Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023. We are on an amended agenda with amended item number four. The board has been in closed session since 5:46 PM and we have one item to report out. In closed session, the board took action to terminate the employment of a permanent food services unit lead one. The vote was unanimous in support of termination. Please join me and rise for the flag salute. Pledge, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. We now turn to items of interest from the board. Would any school board member like to offer? Ms. Martin?
I just was so thrilled with our welcome back rallies. Thank you to staff who were involved with making that such an successful event. I thought the speaker was energizing. I thought he was relatable. And I took some of his insights with me that day and hope to use them this year in the school year for my own teaching. And I just thought it was wonderful. So happy to see what a good start to the school year we're having. So congratulations to everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin. Mrs. Mayor?
I would just like to thank the principals and their staff for all the newsletters and notices they're sending out on parent square. They're so informative. They're positive. They repeat the information more than once. So it's out there for our parents and students. I have a middle schooler this year and so I'm zoned in on Paulings in particular. But it's nice to know what's going on and have that available for our parents. So I want to thank them.
Ms. Santos?
I too want to congratulate staff and Dr. Fawcett for the leadership that you've given this district. The speaker that day was phenomenal. I just got to listen to the afternoon. But to see all the pride and happiness with everybody who attended. I mean, from grounds crew to your librarians, whatever, everybody, we were all one. It was, it was a wonderful day and they were all just as friendly. I mean, whether I knew them or not, they knew you. And so when people say, well, what does your superintendent do? He does a lot and without his staff, he couldn't accomplish that. So people don't realize that we have 19 schools in this school district. And then we have many, many things, many courses and stuff, many books to read, monies to spend. And when people are going back and they see all the new buildings and everything, the improvements that have been made, it's outstanding and it kind of makes you proud to say, your kids go to Luciemar, oh yes, very good. So I just want to commend you for your leadership.
It's team effort, as you mentioned.
And everybody else. And of course, we get to be a part of it as a board. So thank you.
Any other items of interest? Ms. Candell?
I just also want to express my appreciation. I thought the rally was really wonderful and it was great to see the lunch that was so well attended. And I just know how much work went into that. And so just congratulations to everybody who contributed to that.
Anyone else?
I will just concur. Guess the horse isn't dead yet. I'll just keep beating it. Just sending my thanks to the team for that kickoff rally was fantastic. I know it was a huge group effort. I also, I think the labor partners that spoke, I think the words you offered that day were just inspirational and really sort of really reinforced the team Luciemar aspect. So thank you for that. I also wanted to shout out the new employee luncheon as well before that too. I mean, there's a lot of heavy lifting that goes in to sort of kicking, kicking us off and kicking us off in the right direction. So I just sent thanks to your teams who aren't here tonight because it's noticed and appreciated. And just like rings upon, those rings just keep spreading out through, through the district and making an effect. Thank you for that. With that, it turns to superintendent's report. Dr. Fawcett?
Thank you, President Stewart, and I'm going to continue on that horse. Just a wonderful way to kick off the year with that welcome back rally. And I want to shout out to Jessica Borha and Ashley Smith because there's a lot of logistics that go into planning and setting up and organizing and getting the decorations ready. And they put just an outstanding level of effort and forethought into making sure it was successful. So kudos to Ms. and her team for all that. And I'm really happy that staff came back so energized and that energy carried into the first day of school. The way they welcomed back their colleagues and the students and the parents this year was just phenomenal. We made it out to all the school sites over the first two days and there were balloon arches and mascots and all kinds of ways that just made it fun and exciting for kids to feel the energy that first day of school that I'm looking forward to carrying throughout the year. We introduced our theme, growing together, and it's really focusing on that, that growth mindset of dedication and hard work and perseverance that every kid and every single staff member can engage in to get better over the course of the year. So that's exciting for us. Another thing that I want to just highlight is our enrollment remains in positive status. So every year we build in a decline in enrollment in our, in our projections. And this year, we're well above that number, knock on wood. Friday's a big day for us because of the 10-day drop. We're going to see from our secondary schools, update all their enrollment there too. But right now, we're, we're in a very hopeful status there. And then our before school and after school programs are often running. We have those, those programs, the funds that come in to stand those programs up, to pay the staff that run them. They're, they're geared for students and the demographics that are considered free and reduced meal program students and foster youth and homeless students and English language learner students are what those funds are required to pay for. And, and I'm confident and happy to say that those demographics that signed up have been able to enroll in the programs. And we're excited to look forward to continuing to expand the programs to others that don't necessarily qualify for that. And that's going to happen over the coming weeks. And so lots of planning around that. It started way back in the springtime and the hiring started way back in the springtime. And I'm just excited to see that level of service being provided to our community. And with that, I'm handing the mic back over to President Stewart. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fawcett, which moves us into the business of the district. Before we get started in the business of the district, just a reminder that any member of the public may comment on agenda items as they're introduced. It's welcomed as well. It's part of the process. If you wish to address the board, there are speaker cards in the back empty, back hallway. There's yellow speaker cards for items on the agenda and the blue cards for items not on the agenda. Items that are not on the agenda but within the purview of the business of the district, we'll, we'll have a chance to speak at the end of the meeting. Time limit is three minutes per item, per speaker card for one agenda item. For anybody new to how this works, the Brown Act prohibits us from actually responding. So that's an opportunity for the public to give testimony to us that we take under advisement for consideration. So if the answer is thank you, that's not meant to be insulting or anything like that. That is just the very specific nature of how the process, process works up here. Our expected decorums and norms are in the back of the agenda. It's basically behave as if you're at grandma's house for Sunday brunch or how you expect our students to behave in the classrooms on site. So that's the expectation in this room as well. We do have translation services available for, for our Spanish speakers. So if anybody needs a translator from Spanish into English or English into Spanish, please let us know. We have Senor Hernandez here to offer those support services. And with that, we will begin the business of the district tonight with the consent calendar. Would any member of the board like to pull one of the consent items for discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. Would any member of the public would like to comment on consent calendar items one through three, amended four and five through 18? Now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the board for any comment.
I just wanted to make a quick comment.
Yes.
On item number one, the personnel actions. We have three pages of personnel actions, lots of new substitutes, renewing substitutes, lots of people wanting to have part-time employment, full-time employment with the school district, knowing we're such a good employer. So it was good to see.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other comments on consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I make a motion for items on the consent calendar action items, items one through 18 with an amended four.
Second.
Martin, motion by Martin, second by Naomi Bernier. Roll call, vote please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Ms. Candell?
Yes.
Ms. Pham?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. Which moves us to reports and presentations, resolutions, proclamations, item number 19, Report Summer Institute. I'm assuming that is Ms. Dixon?
You assume?
No, it's Mr. Ike Perdert, sir.
No.
Nope.
It's me.
It's Ms. Dixon.
It's me and her.
Mr. Ike Perdert was going to be like, all right, here we go. Summer Institute, Ms. Smith is going to take over here shortly. But Summer Institute is one of the things we're really proud of that the district has put on for many years to support our certificated staff and classified instructionally focused staff are also invited to learn about new programs and other strategies to really kick the year off well. So Ms. Smith and other members of our team were intricately involved in creating the program this year. So I'm going to turn it over to her.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to talk about the Summer Institute. This has been an ongoing practice for us for a while that's built in capacity every year. This year, we held it again at the AG campus, August 8th through 10th. But we usually, with the exception of the NPR, which we had for the new staff, we usually hold it in the 300 wing, that kind of area. But this time, we had the pleasure of actually hosting the whole institute in the brand new building, which was really great and honestly very convenient for our district office staff who run it so they didn't have to tote stuff as far. So we might stick with staying in that new beautiful building in future years if we have it at AG again. So you can view session descriptions, but basically we had about 75 new teachers. Around 47 of them participated in the first full day where I, along with some other people, give some basic instructions on what to do, how to log in, how the district functions. And ever since we started doing this for our new staff, we really received positive feedback. It helps them not, not know how to use everything, but know where to look for what's even available. What Ares is, where's clever, what's in there, what's a digital textbook? Just those basic things that we really improved the processes on since doing this. We had about 175 teacher participants over 50 sessions. And then we offered asynchronous learning like we did in the past, the past one year at least, and then during COVID. We've continued that. Teachers really like participating. There's things like Ares training and clever training that they can do at their own pace. They can be paid for and earn salary advancement because they just turn in a little certificate at the end of it, showing the hours and what they've earned. And then on the left-hand side here, you can see a picture from KSBY and this also earned us some positive press, which is always nice. So here's the schedule for Monday. Like I alluded to, the first day is really for the new teachers and it kind of has that focus. So getting ready. And then we end that session with like how to manage stress, stress management strategies as an adult, as well as in your classroom. We do thinking maps and then CPR. And then the week really builds. When we get into Tuesday, you can see all of the offerings we have. One of the bigger sessions was Science of Reading led by our amazing TOSA team with an elementary focus. I think Ms. Mayor had the pleasure of attending that. We also do parent square, which is our communication device, talk about grade book and then some ELL trainings on Tuesday. Wednesday, another full day with classroom management, CPR, super popular time to get it done during Summer Institute because that recertification is a big chunk of time. And then talking about Desmos and some math options that we're going to begin investigating this year. And then on Thursday, we wrapped it up with a bunch of text strands, some more foundational reading trainings, some science alignment and planning time for middle school specifically, and some SEL workshops. So overall, like I said, that was the in-person onsite PD that we offered. And then throughout the summer, they also had the opportunity to participate in asynchronous PD, which we sent out at the end of last school year. So they have kind of all summer to work on it. Ares has gotten a lot better at the offerings that they offer. They're free. And so we're able to direct new teachers or people that change grade levels, want to learn more about the grade book to Ares trainings and things. There's inventive uses like Screencastify that teachers can get help with. Go Guardian continues to be a really great resource for us as well. And those are all in there and again, available for salary advancement at their own pace throughout the summer. So overall, we had about 31 facilitators, 56 sessions, 76 new teachers that participated in some capacity, 175 attendees overall, and then another 75 or so, we're kind of still totaling them as they're coming in, that participated in the asynchronous professional development. So with that, I am happy to take any questions, but overall it was a really pleasant experience as always for Summer Institute.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Questions from trustees? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. Would any member of the public would like to comment on item number 19? That would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment. Ms. Martin?
I just think it's wonderful if an employee wants to earn a little bit of extra money, get better prepared for the job they're going to do in the fall. Give them a little leg up, you know, and sometimes during the school year, you don't have time to get really good at, you know, one of the new tech programs that we brought in or something. So to, and be with other colleagues, just like when we go to CSBA conference, when I was just looking at your slide, I was looking at who was doing the presenting. I was scanning your slide to see which teachers were doing, you know, they're, they're presented by energetic and experienced teachers who know their stuff. So, and you know, we don't need to bring experts in. We have our own. So this is what's so good about it.
Yes, agreed.
I think it's just great that you have a lot of young ones that are so excited about doing these new things and stuff like that. At, at the workshop we had, there was a student that my son went to school with and she says, you don't know, but I know your son. And she was so excited about everything that's going to be happening in the school district.
Great.
Any other comments from board members?
I'll just say again how much I enjoyed the Science of Reading. I wish it had been around when I was a teenager.
Science just keeps changing.
Very good, very good.
And I'll also offer my thanks as well. I mean, I love this program every year. I love how well attended it is. I love how the commitment to being like long learners as well. And I love to see all those sort of the math PD that was embedded in there, math, science and the reading too as well. So, so just thank you. I know this is a sort of heavy lift over the summer. So it's appreciated.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, this is a report only. So we'll close item number 19 and move on to item number 20. Approval adoption of resolution number A-2324-03, certificated teaching assignment options for the 2023-2024 school year. Dr. Handy?
Thank you, President Stewart. Every year I come to you with this board item. California law requires that schools employ only individuals with either the appropriate credential or those with an alternative assignment option established by statute or regulation that allows the individual to teach in California schools. California education code provides a variety of alternative assignment options that allow the district to legally employ individuals outside of their subject area credential, so long as the employer follows the guidelines established by regulations when implementing said assignment options. And you can see those relevant education code at the bottom of the attachment. So it is recommended that the board adopt resolution number A-2324-03, certificated teaching assignment options for the 2324 school year. With Luciemar Unified School District, I will serve the pleasure of the board to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Handy. Questions from board members? Seeing none, go to public comment. Would any member of the public like to comment on item number 20? Now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment.
Michelle Cossey is there every year.
So was Robin Metzger.
I know, I know. I, I don't know. I'd like to see like a certificate or something in French for her so that she doesn't have to do this every time.
Any other comments from board members? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for approval.
I move.
Yeah, go ahead, Donna.
I move approval, adoption of resolution number A-2324-03, certificated teaching assignment options for 2023-2024.
Second.
Motion by Candell, second by Mayor. Roll call vote please.
Ms. Candell?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Ms. Pham?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. Which moves us to items scheduled for discussion, possible action items. Item number 21. Approval second reading, curriculum adoption, AP Literature, Royal Grandy High School and Napuma High School. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, President Stewart. We are bringing back for your consideration this evening the AP Literature adoption requested by the two teachers, one at AGHS and one at Napuma High School. They went through a formal review process and to have selected ideas in literature is indicated in the document. The curriculum has been on public review since we last reported two weeks ago and we are interested in your possible approval this evening. So I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Miss Dixon. Questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. I do have one speaker card, but if any other member of the public would like to speak on this item, now would be the time to fill out a speaker card. Ms. Roof?
Hi, good evening, board and, and staff. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name's Virginia Roof and I'm a parent here in the district. I have one high school student who is on the AP track. So when I saw this item come up, I was like, oh, this is really exciting. And I love language, literature, English. So I had a chance to look at the attachment so that I could take a look at the textbook and, and on you can see some of it. And I was just really impressed. And I wanted to thank the curriculum department for their careful consideration in picking such a great book and also to the teachers for bringing it forward. And that's all that I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roof. If any other member of the public would like to comment on item number 21, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for approval.
I move approval for the curriculum adoption, AP Literature, Royal Grandy High School and Napuma High School.
Second.
Motion by Mayor, second by Santos. Roll call vote please.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Ms. Candell?
Yes.
Ms. Pham?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. Which brings us to item number 22. Approval second reading, core novels for high school. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, President Stewart. As you may recall, we brought this item for your consideration first in June and we wanted to make sure that any interested members of the public would have the opportunity to consider these over the summer. So it's been a few months since we brought it back for you. The goal of this project was to clarify and make more transparent the various core novels that we use in our high school English classes. So you can see on your list those that every student in grades nine, grade nine in English nine or advanced English nine will read, which include Romeo and Juliet and To Kill a Mockingbird. And that continues on for the rest of the grades. And in addition, we have some other novels that the English departments at our various high schools worked on to identify as optional novels that they would choose to add in as well. So those are listed as well. The goal again of this project was to, we had a really large list and long-term board members may remember it was a multi-page document. And it really wasn't very clear what teachers were choosing. So we wanted to make that much more clear. So that's what we have before you today. And then any additional supplemental works that teachers may choose to add to poetry, anything like that will be from the CDE recommended list, which we keep copies of in the office. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. Ms. Roof, I know you had wanted to speak on the item as well. If any other member of the public will come up after Ms. Roof, you can hand the yellow card to Mrs. Dwight and she'll get it up.
Hi, again, thanks for having me for this item as well. I just wanted to say how happy I was to see diverse authors represented on the list. When my son came home with his 10th grade list, I saw the two texts that were represented on the list and I was really excited. He's already read one, but not the other. So he was excited to see something he was familiar with that he could dive into more deeply in the course. And he has Mr. Callahan this year and I just want to call him out for an outstanding syllabus. It was clear he has a lot of rigor, but also was very welcoming and respectful and according to my son, also funny. So that was really exciting for him to have. I was also going to, I think you answered my question, Ms. Dixon, that there will be other books that teachers can select and that'll be up to teacher discretion. And then I just wanted to confirm, and I know we can't speak back because of the nature of the agenda, but I just wanted to confirm that there are no banned books. I've heard rumors of, oh, we're not allowed to teach that. We're not allowed to teach that. And I just wanted to confirm that. And then also maybe make a suggestion. I'm not sure if this was part of the review process, but as curriculum decisions are coming forward for the high school, I know AG has the Equity and Inclusion Committee and I was wondering if they might give a pass to some curriculum choices moving forward to just not necessarily be a decision maker, but give their input from that committee if that's possible. So that's all my comments. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Roof. Next up, we have Ms. Fuller. Welcome.
I'm new to this. So I actually had questions, but I know I'm not allowed to ask questions.
You can ask them. We just can't sort of necessarily answer them here, but we'll write them down.
Okay. The main thing was I was looking through the additional books that are option, or they can choose from. And I haven't read some of them and they deal with, at least it sounds like they could deal with intense topics. The one book that I had looked at where it says we are not from here, it sounds like it's a really good book about three teams who are trying to come from somewhere else to America. And it's going to deal with like sexual assault, death, rape, violence against children, dismemberment, blah, blah, blah. I don't know if the book is just like talks about those things in a like easy to, easier to swallow way or if it's more graphic. And so my question was if a student is reading this and it's like causing them anxiety or they're having a hard time like processing, learning about things, maybe they didn't know other people were having to go through. What, like, what is the process for helping them process that? Like for their social emotional wellness? Is it the teacher's responsibility or will parents have a heads up? Or are these books like, it's, it's just kind of tasteful or, I don't know. I don't know if I'm explaining myself well, but I don't know these books if it's going to be cause those kind of emotions. So that's my question statement. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's any other members of the public that would like to comment on item number 22, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, I'm going to close public comment and I just want to follow up on a couple of things. The, the lists, the list of titles that are not here are from the approved state CDE list, correct?
Correct.
Great. So if a teacher is not choosing this selection of items. With the alternate list, those are optional reads, correct?
Yes. The idea behind the list is that every student in Luciemar High School, to use ninth grade as an example, will read. to use ninth grade as an example, will read Romeo and Juliet and To Kill a Mockingbird, no matter which of our three comprehensives they go to. And then each school will choose one additional piece from the list that is at the bottom. So the ninth grade at Aurora Grande High School might choose Persepolis, where the ninth grade at Napomo High School might choose In the Time of the Butterflies, and the ninth grade at Central Coast New Tech might also choose one of those two. So that was the conversation amongst our English teachers. Um, and then outside of those options, then anything else that teachers would choose would be from the CDE recommended list.
Great. And then all these alternates, the, they're set up in context and for support from?
Yes, correct. And, um, and the teachers are well aware of the age level of their students. So what a fourteen or fifteen-year-old student in ninth grade might be ready for is certainly not the same as a seventeen and eighteen-year-old student um, in their senior year of, of their English class. So they make the appropriate decisions.
Thank you. And then, uh, we are not banning any books at the, at the moment.
Not at the moment.
Great. Thanks, just to confirm that. Yeah, great. And I'll bring it back to the board for questions. Ms. Martin?
Ms. Dixon, we have a policy where any parent could ask for a alternate book to read for their student rather than a student, a book that's assigned for their student, correct?
Um, I wouldn't necessarily call that a policy, but we do have that opportunity. Um, and as a former English teacher in the district myself, it would happen from time to time that there was a personal issue or there was perhaps a religious belief or something like that, that, um, the parent was concerned about. So all of our English teachers, um, know how to handle those conversations and support families and, and students if there's something that they're concerned about.
It's funny, on a side note, I, my office is adjacent to the library at San Luis High School, and um, all the tenth grade classes came in to get night today. So, and we're all like, this is so little, I can read this this weekend. I'm gonna go ahead up to class and read it all. And I was like, because it's such a wonderful book and it's so, um, thrilling that, yes, it's, you can read it on a Saturday. And so these girls were all like, oh, we're gonna all read it this weekend. I'm like, go for it. Anyways, dabble here tonight.
They could have a little book club.
Oh, yes, they do.
Are there any other comments from trustees on this agenda item? Seeing none, uh, we will entertain a motion for approval of this second reading.
I move for the approval of core novels for high school.
Second?
Motion by Naomi Bernier, second by Martin. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Ms. Smarten?
Yes.
Ms. Candell?
Yes.
Ms. Pham?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Ms. Mayer?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. Which brings us to item number twenty-three. First reading, revision of board policies, administrative regulations, exhibits, and bylaws. Dr. Fawcett?
Thank you, President Stewart. So we are getting back on the cycle of updating and maintaining our board policies, administrative regulations, exhibits, and bylaws. Um, and tonight before you, we have a batch that was, um, updated and reviewed by members of the cabinet and myself over, um, the summer, the, over the summer. And, um, each one of them are CSBA reckon, uh, CSBA recommendations, their updates to, to law, um, and their updates to practice. Um, and we encourage you to review them and ask questions, and then we'll bring them back for the, the second and hopefully final reading at the next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fawcett. Questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on item number twenty-three, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, we're gonna close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment. Ms. Pham?
Um, just confirming with Dr. Fawcett that, um, the, the actual packet of all the changes will be attached to the website because it's not currently attached to the website at this time.
It, it actually is currently on the website now. It was updated just a little while ago, and there's backup copies in the lobby as well. Thank you, Ms. Pham.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members?
I'm just glad that we, this is the first reading and, yes, pretty thick, and there's a lot to look at.
So if that's the case, this will again be coming back for a, a second reading and a consideration for approval at our next board meeting. So I'm gonna close item number twenty-three, which moves us to public comment on items not on this evening's agenda. I do have two speaker cards, but if any other person would like to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda but within the purview of the district, now would be the time to fill out one of those blue cards. Uh, first up, and forgive me, I think I'm gonna mangle your last name, is, uh, Doug Craven.
Good evening, President Stewart, board members, Superintendent Fawcett, and district staff. My name is Douglas Hoiman, and I have lived in Slow County since nineteen ninety-one. I am addressing you this evening as the Chair of Central Coast Coalition for Inclusive Schools. First, I want to acknowledge that often written communication from the state, especially from the Department of Education, is addressed to county superintendents like James Bresch, or to your own, uh, superintendent, uh, Dr. Fawcett, and it's not directly goes to the school board members. So there's not, the people are trying to keep you in the dark, but get a lot. I, I, uh, I go to a lot of board meetings up in the North County where I'm from. I'm from a Tascadero. So I do know all the stuff you're working on, for, for the most part. So I just want to bring your attention to a memo, a letter, and a press release that came out, uh, over the summer. So I, I believe they passed out, um, packages for everybody. Um, on May thirtieth, the Department of Education issued a memorandum of guidance on removal of instruction on our instructional materials in which school districts are reminded of the following. One, students have First Amendment rights to receive information. Two, students have the right to be free from discrimination. Three, there are legal requirements for instruction in instructional materials, including enforcement of the Fair Act, which is the Fair, Accurate, Inclusive, and Respectful Education Act that was passed in twenty-eleven. And whereby, social sciences curriculum must include the role and contributions of LGBT Americans to the economic, political, and social development of California and the nation. And four, that there are legal prohibitions on instruction, instructional materials. That's one of them. Um, on June first, Governor Newsom, Attorney General Bonta, and the State Superintendent Thurman issued a letter entitled, "Educational Rights and Request to Remove Instructional Materials." This letter addresses the unprecedented call, both nationally and statewide, to ban books, which is now being couched by some as book curating. And I quote, "As state leaders elected to represent the values of all Californians, we offer our response in one shared voice. Access to books, including books that reflect the diverse experiences and perspectives of Californians, especially those that may challenge us to grapple with uncomfortable truth, is a found, is a profound freedom we all must protect and cultivate," close quotes. Lastly, on June seventh, the governor's press office issued a press release announcing that Governor Newsom and Attorney General Bonta demanded answers from Temecula Valley Unified School District Board of Education regarding its decisions to reject the Social Studies Alive Program for grades one through five. That rejected curriculum was recommended by district staff, adopted by the State Board of Education, and is in line with the Fair Education Act's requirements. Sure, you're very aware of how that district has been fined one point five million dollars.
We are at time, so if you could briefly wrap them.
Wrapping it up. As I remind you, as elected officials, you took an oath to uphold the Constitution and laws of the state of California. I encourage all board members to review the aforementioned documents and the laws to which are in accordance with those laws. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hoiman. Uh, followed by Chris Ryan.
Okay, Chris?
You okay?
Yeah, no, I'm good. I just didn't realize my foot had fallen asleep, and then I stood up. Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Ryan. Um, I've come to you this evening as a parent, um, of three Luciamar children. Um, I have a senior, a freshman, and a fifth grader this year. And the reason for my, uh, comments this evening, uh, this summer, my eldest daughter was one of our lifeguards during our summer swim program. And as a result of the, uh, her inclusion, uh, with the swim program when she was a young child, she had many great, uh, role models to look up to. Uh, she learned to swim, um, and she became very comfortable. She's now, uh, one of our swimmers and plays water polo. Now, the, the reason for, uh, coming this evening is that in order to be one of our lifeguards, um, she had to get her American Red Cross Lifeguard, uh, certification, which is a bi-annual thing. It costs two hundred and forty-five dollars. And, um, we did not, uh, compensate the lifeguards, uh, for the time that they, uh, took to do this. The result of that was that, uh, we have many of our more experienced lifeguards moving on to other locations and, uh, circumstances where, um, they would be, uh, better compensated. Uh, on top of the, the in-person training, which was about twenty hours, they also had modules that they needed to complete ahead of time, at their own time. Um, some of them were able to complete it in, uh, six hours, some eight hours. Everybody goes at their own, uh, pace. Um, I heard, uh, Ms. Smith talking about how we compensated our staff